Hey, good evening. We have, it must just look like we have an incredibly busy agenda. We really don't, but we have some well deserved recognitions that are going to take place here in just a few minutes. So then we'll take a break a little bit after the recognitions. That'll give you a chance, if you wish, you're welcome to stay or you may leave. It's just that when we have a whole bunch of people out in the foyer area, it's really hard to hear and hear. So we'll, we'll give you that option, but we're not pushing you out the door. So, so bear with us. We've got some things that we have to do otherwise, and then we'll get started. If you would all stand and anyone who's wearing a cap or hat, please remove your hat and we'll do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the five hundred and ninety states of America. This is Baldwin. Could we have a roll call, please?
Cecilia Aragon.
Here.
Beth Bear.
Here.
Steve Gosar.
Here.
Alex Christine.
Here.
Janice Marshall.
Here.
Nate Martin.
Here.
Carrie Murphy.
Here.
Emily Stanton.
Here.
Kim Sorenson.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. We, next will be to approve the agenda with the following consent items. Personnel recommendations, school improvement plans, fundraising activities for Laramie Middle School, accepting a $5,828 donation from Mountain West Farm Bureau to the Feed It Forward Program, the minutes of the work session of November first, two thousand twenty-three, minutes of the regular meeting of November eighth, two thousand twenty-three, minutes of the executive session of November eighth, two thousand twenty-three. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the agenda and to move personnel recommendations until after the executive session.
I don't believe. I don't believe we need a second to do that. We will do that, okay? So we are moving personnel recommendations from the consent agenda to immediately after the executive session. Thank you. Do we have a motion? Would that be an amended motion?
No, that's the motion.
A motion, a motion to approve the agenda.
That's what I just.
Okay, a second. I was asking for a second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Most motions passed. Okay, let's go to recognitions. I want to start out with Slade and I'm going to introduce their principal, Mrs. Heather Morrow. There she is. So if you're in the back and you're from Slade, come on forward.
You can face the school board here, so turn that way. All right, well, Chairman Sorenson, trustees, thank you for having us here today. I'm excited to introduce you to a bunch of our Slade Eagles. At Slade, every month we celebrate some kind of trait or characteristic in people. And last month it was gratitude. So these students were nominated by their teachers or by their fellow peers to show that, because they show gratitude, not only in just being like saying please and thank you and using manners, but also just being really thoughtful and showing that they care about their peers and what they do in life. So I would like to introduce them. I told them when I called their name, just kind of wave so you know who they are. I'll read all the names of the kids because there are forty kids. In kindergarten, we had Salone, Corley, Alenna, Percy's. Wave Percy's. Nope, she doesn't want to. And Charlie, those are our kindergartners. In first grade, we had Charlie, Aiden, Caleb and Kit. In second grade, we had McHalen, Joseph, Felici, Landry, Hazel, Lilian, Miriam, Peyton and Brooklyn. And then in third grade, we had Tristan, Landon, Ivy, Cadence, Xander, Summer, Amina, Oliver and Lucy. And then in fifth grade, we had Danny, Brooklyn, Silas, America, Hostway and Yogi. And then finally in fifth grade, Kenzie, Jaden, Abigail, Brayden and Leiana. So we just want to say thank you for showing your gratitude at Slade. You make Slade a great place to be every day. Thank you.
Next, we would like to recognize our LHS state champion diver Maggie Turpin. I know her coach is here. Thank you for coming.
She's here, she's here. So I'm going to introduce Ben Hurt, our diving coach. He was the assistant coach of the year this year. And just say a few words about our diving program before Ben introduces Maggie here. We not only had our first place diver in the meet, we had the second place diver in the meet. We had the sixth place diver in the meet. The top six athletes get to be on the podium, so we had half of them. We also had two in the next six, which were also point scorers for the meet. And we would have had three there, but we had an emergency surgery a couple of weeks heading into the state competition or competition that, that took somebody out. So we would have had half of the people in the top twelve at state in diving. And that's just a testament to Ben, and that's why he earned assistant coach of the year. So Ben, come on up and introduce Maggie.
Thanks, Tamara. Hi, everybody. So I'd like to introduce Maggie to everybody. This is Maggie Turpin. She's our state champion in one meter diving from Laramie High School for four A at the Wyoming High School State Meet. So. Maggie's, Maggie's new to Albany County School District and new to LHS. She moved down here from Sheridan and we were very happy to have her arrive. And I, I just, I can't imagine how difficult that is, starting at a new school, right? Joining a new team. And it's just a testament to Maggie's personality and, and to our team. They welcomed her with open arms and Maggie, and they really melded into this really cool culture of hard work and commitment. And that's why like she leveled everybody up and they embraced her and it was really very cool to see. So congratulations, Maggie.
I just want to thank Ben and Tamara for getting me right. Thank you.
Thank you. And congratulations on your coach of the year as well. Thank you. Danielle Conkle and Brian Coxbill, the sponsors for the FFA national teams. They just came back from their trip. And if you've been following on Facebook or otherwise, they had a remarkable trip and it was fun to, to read about and watch. Thank you for coming.
So I'm Brian Coxbill. I'm one of the ag teachers and FFA advisors, Danielle Conkle's back there. We took two teams to national convention in October, our ag mechanics team and our chapter conduct of meetings team. To compete at national convention, you have to be a state champion. So they won state last April and competed against anywhere from forty-five to fifty state champion teams in Indianapolis. Our ag mechanics team, those four boys went out and were seventh in the nation. Marshall Olson couldn't make it today, but he was the third high individual in the nation and he received a cash award of eight hundred bucks. Our chapter conduct of meetings team, that's essentially a parliamentary procedure contest. They were the reserve national champions. So. I don't know if anybody else has any questions or anything like that, but.
They each got.
I think they each got six hundred bucks, yeah.
Their cash awards.
Wow, that's great.
Jim was.
Oh, yes. My son Jim was the high chair in the nation, too.
Congratulations. Thank you so much. Could we, could we get you to introduce yourselves?
I'm Keegan Aurelius, I was part of the ag mechanics team.
I'm Brendan Wagner, I was a part of the mechanics team.
I'm Jim Coxbill, I was on the conduct team when I was chairman.
I'm James Vosik, and I was on the conduct team and I was the treasurer.
I'm Trenton Rogers and I was the sentinel on the conduct team.
I'm Wyatt Strain and I was the reporter on the conduct team.
We also had a couple of boys on the mechanics team that were homesick tonight. That was Colin Borr, Marshall Olson, and then Riley Lake and Shannon Stenson were on the conduct team. One couldn't, Jimmy Johnson was also homesick. One couldn't make it because of Rhodes and one had a ballgame, I believe, so.
Mr. Chairman. Thank you so much for coming. This is, this is quite a privilege for us. And from watching your program over the years, it's been phenomenal and it's, it was a kick to watch it. This year, you had a bunch of parents posting pictures and, and so on and so forth. Trustee Martin. So I know what ag mechanics are. I don't know what a conduct team does. Does somebody enlighten me? Is it a contact sport?
So in FFA, we have a conduct of chapter meetings as well as parliamentary procedure. Conduct of chapter meetings is basically a simplified version of our parliamentary procedure contest for eighth graders and freshmen. So there's a bunch of required motions and conduct just has less of them, less to do, simpler for younger kids.
Cool, thank you. And you can kind of police us and let us know that we're doing okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much for coming. It was our privilege to meet you all. Thank you so much. Thank you. It would be remiss, that person that you're looking at on the screens that faced the other way is our superintendent. So Dr. Goldheart, don't let us forget that you're up there. Next would be the LHS volleyball, and I love this, state championship team and their coach of the year, Mrs. Jill Stuckey. Congratulations, come on up.
Hi, so we have a few girls on FaceTime right now. We have a number of our kids in right here. Yeah. We have a number of our kids in volleyball practice down in Colorado for their club team. So we pulled them right off their courts and they're FaceTiming in right now. But thanks for having us tonight. We had a wonderful season and we were ranked number one from the first day of preseason all the way through the very end. And we held on to it in the state finals match and won in five, which was a big deal for us. And we managed to just find a way to win at the very end. And it was an outstanding season. We went thirty-three and one. We dropped one set darned, but it was the best thing that probably happened to us all year. And we regrouped first date and we came back and played twice as hard and were smarter and realizing that, hey, we could, we can't get beat. And we went out with a force and managed to win the whole thing. So it was a pretty exciting season. But with us today, I have Maddie Stuckey, who is a senior. She is our setter and she's headed to the University of Wyoming in about a month. For, she's going to join the Calgro volleyball team and start with weights and training with them. And we have Anna Sell, who is also a senior and she is our libero. And Anna will be going to the University of Wyoming as well in engineering, right? And follow in her family's footsteps, maybe, we'll see. We have Carson Mylum, who played left side and right side for us, meaning she's a big hitter with a big arm. And she had a great season. I think she was by far our most improved player this year. We have Annika Keane, who is also a junior and she's a setter as well. And she helped us in postseason and helped us just prepare for all of our opponents. And she has a great role coming up next year, so it's going to be fun. And then on the phone, we have, who's first? We have Ava Plasmeyer, who is a sophomore. Ava Plasmeyer, who is a sophomore, and she's a middle blocker. And then next we have. We have Tessa Dodd, who is an outside hitter. She's also a sophomore. We have Kiara Gardner, who is also a sophomore. And finally, we have Mashawn Sailors, who is a junior. So really, we don't have a ton graduating. We have quite a few coming back, so our future looks very bright, so it's exciting.
I'm anticipating a question, or maybe they're just too shy to ask. But this came into practice or more common after I left. Tell us what libero.
Okay, so there's two ways to say it, libero or libero. And internationally, it's called libro or the bro. And so the libero came in way after, I, I think it came in in probably the year two thousand, two thousand and one, right in there. And they're free, meaning lead, meaning free, a free substitution. So our libero can run in and out for anybody that's in the back row and we don't have to count the substitution. Because in volleyball, we get only a limited amount of subs. And once those subs are gone, we have to play with whoever's left on the floor. So a free sub is what that is. And they aren't allowed to use their hands as a setter in front of the ten foot line. So they have to bump set everything from the back row when they give it to a hitter who's in the front row. And they also conserve in one rotation and they can't hit with their hand above the plane of the net. So they have to be a person that can only topspin a ball, you know, like just spin it in play. Just as a ball control move, not an aggressive move. So they're primarily a defensive player that also does pass and serve.
Okay, you passed, you got that right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you remember the last time you won the state championship in volleyball?
Uh, we won it two years ago.
Two years ago, before then, then.
Oh, okay, the year before that. So this is three and four years, but before that.
Thank you.
I, I want to say Kiara Gardner's mom was on the team. And so it's second generation coming through, winning the state title, so it's exciting.
Well, thank you. And, and thank you also for coming and, and you did a great job of talking about your whole team and you are the coach of the year.
Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations, girls. Thank you so much for coming. Laramie Middle School Wrestling Team, they were the conference champions. And what makes that even more special, just like our volleyball group, they've won this two years in a row, so you, you have a track record. Thank you so much for coming. You have a coach here that wants to. There you go, we'll need you up at there and press the right hand button. There you go. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Thanks for having us in. My name is Brian Giesinger, the head coach of the middle school wrestling team. And like you said, two years in a row, we've won the Southeast Wyoming Athletic Conference. Just another great season, great kids, great coaches, great administration at LMS, supporting us all the way through. Several champions standing right here. And it looks like we only have a couple of eighth graders up here, so we're getting a lot of our team back again next year. We're hoping to be standing up here again next year, saying the same thing, but. Why don't we let you guys introduce yourselves and maybe tell these guys how, how you placed this year at conference?
I'm Jax McLean. I wrestled one seventy-one at conference and I got first place and I'm an eighth grader.
Hi, I'm Miles Klinger. I wrestled conference and heavyweight and I got first, first place.
My name's Noah Ingle and I wrestled one ninety-seven at conference and I got first.
Also first at the middle school state tournament last Sunday.
Uh, I'm Liam O'Dea, I'm seventh grade. Wrestled ninety-five at conference and I got first there.
I'm Antonio Gruman and I'm in eighth grade and I wrestled one oh five at conference and I got second.
I'm Charlie Coxbill. I wrestled one twenty and I got fourth place.
Thank you so much for coming. Thank you so much for coming. And my notes here say that you also took first place and second place was sixty points behind you? That's pretty good, pretty impressive, gentlemen. Thank you so much. Community service award, Mr. Slyman.
Thank you. Thanks for joining, Catherine. So this is, I'll wait, I'll wait for Chairman Sorenson. Ready? I am. Thank you, Chairman Sorenson, trustees. I heard about an amazing young person who's been coordinating a program for the Laramie Animal Welfare Society. And I thought to myself, wouldn't it be cool to recognize students engaging in really altruistic activities in service to our community? So this is my first endeavor at doing such a thing. I, I actually approached Dr. Goldheart with the idea and he said, go for it. I think it's great. So here we are today. I then met this person at Laramie High School. I was enthralled by her knowledge, experiences, rationale, passion and compassion. She's a senior at Laramie High School. Very accomplished student, to put it mildly, as I looked through her records. When I met her, my purpose was to put together an introduction that included info about the work that she's been doing and to just really share that with, share that with you all and hand her this and let everybody clap. And then we would be on our way. I will tell you, as I sat with her and listened to her, I leaned back in my chair and I said, the last thing in the world the board needs to hear is me talking about her. She needs to tell this story, her purpose, her passion, her energy and her compassion, not only for what she's been doing the last several years in service to our community, but her plans for the future. So I'm going to introduce you all now to Catherine Eastman Curry. And I'm going to sit down in Dr. Goldheart's chair, if that's okay with you, Dr. Goldheart, and listen to Catherine tell you about what she does and why she does these things. And then I will give her this and we can clap and you can go.
Thank you all so much for having me this evening. I'm really excited to talk with you about a little bit of what I've been doing over the past five years. Crazy to think, but I've been working with Loz for five years. I started out as a thirteen-year-old who was looking up animal opportunities because I have always wanted to explore a career and a path. You know, my path has always been to work with animals. And as I figured out, to work with the people that work with animals. So I started with Loz in two thousand eighteen. I worked in kennels for about two years when COVID hit. We were all out of school. I had all this free time. It was so nice. And that was when we really needed someone to step up and take over some of the coordination of some of the programs that had previously maybe struggled or programs that we were finding we really needed in the community that we didn't have at that point. So I stepped in and started helping to coordinate our second facility, our intake facility. I started with our dog program, which we really hadn't had before two thousand twenty. And I started helping to run our TNR program, which for those of you who don't know, that's trapped neuter return of feral colony cats in town. A lot of people don't know, Laramie has a lot of feral cats. That's where a lot of people in town get their kittens, is Loz and our feral colonies. So all of those things kind of came together and over the past three and a half years, I've been doing that with the majority of my time, as well as fostering hundreds at this point of neonatal and medical foster kittens, a couple of bottle puppies sprinkled in there. So, so that's kind of where, where I have been for the past couple of years. That's what I've been doing. And, and through that, I've really found that accessibility is huge and it's not something that we have enough of for pets and pet owners in Laramie. Medical care, food, all of those things that, you know, some people don't realize are so hard to come by. And so especially with our trap neuter return program, working with the colony caretakers who are out there, they, a lot of these colonies are in, are in low income areas. People don't have a lot, but there's a lot of cats and people have a lot of compassion. So, so my work out there has been to support those people in the ways that we can as an organization, whether that be through fixing the cats on their property or taking kittens into foster care, whatever that may look like. So that's, that's part of, you know, what I've been doing as well as our dog program. Since starting that in two thousand twenty, we've adopted out over four hundred dogs since then. Some of you I know have adopted a couple of our dogs. And so that's been a huge joy, a huge part of that. So that has really led me to believe that shelter medicine, as a shelter veterinarian in the future, is definitely in the cards for me. I plan to attend U Dub after graduating this year in pre-vet and then potentially explore Cornell, the University of Florida, for their shelter medicine program. So I guess it's a little overview of me. I know some of you in here, so hi to those of you who I know. And thank you so much for having me. I really appreciate it. And thank you for inviting me to be here and to, to speak.
So what.
Just so, just so you have an example of the kind of numbers they deal with, when I heard about Catherine, that day they had, I think, spayed or neutered sixty-three animals with a volunteer program from, with a, I think it might have been, I don't want to say the wrong vet clinic.
Yeah.
But vet clinic also volunteers their time to work with Catherine to get this done in our community. So my first ever, I don't know if it's the first ever, but my first ever community service recognition in gratitude for your service here in Laramie to you, Catherine.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for coming. All right, this has never happened before. So the last night is my chair. This is like a president, I guess. We don't have an audience communications signed up. So we are going to move to number seven, straight up with the superintendent's report, Dr. Goldheart.
Thank you, Chairman Sorenson. I, I have no new items to share with the board. Other than at this time of the year, I, I wish our board members and our community a very happy holiday season.
We are very grateful for the support we have in the Laramie community for our school district. And the opportunities that our students have in this incredible place. So thank you all of, all of you. And then thank you, Chair Sorenson, for your service this past year. And I look forward to working with our new chair as well.
Thank you. Drive safe on the way back. Financials, the monthly financial report. Mrs. Green.
Thank you, Chairman Sorenson, trustees. The financials presented to you tonight, as always, are on a cash basis, meaning true money in, true money out. Your revenue, you will see, is slightly higher this month. That is because we are a non-mineral district and our 25 and six mil non-mineral tax payments were received. Non-minerals are still on that payout in November and June deadline. It's only the minerals that were moved to the monthly payout in the session, Senate File 60 change. Because of that, that's why your revenue shows an uptick, but we are still on track for what was projected. And we did receive a $309,000 tax shortfall grant due to overestimating those taxes in last year's budget. That is always trued up a year later. So we did receive that. That was not budgeted funding. So that is a little bit extra there. Your, yes, as for your bill list, you will see it is sitting at 1.7 million, which is about what it was last month and on track for your typical monthly expenditures. For that, I stand for any questions.
Could you repeat that part about we got money that we weren't planning on? How much it was?
You got $309,000 in a tax shortfall grant. You had only budgeted 10,000.
Thank you.
309,000, you only budgeted 10,000.
Good job. We have a motion to accept the federal, excuse me, the monthly financial reports as presented.
No move.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded. Are there any questions for Tristan tonight? Yes, Trustee Marshall.
Thank you. Couple of questions. Where are we with the audit? And do you have an estimate of where we stand with our reserves right now?
So the audit, we were, they were hoping to have it to us before Thanksgiving, a draft version of the FY '22 audit. I have just emailed the auditor this week and have not received any, an email back regarding that as to when we can expect that. They have already started collecting our FY '23 data and they are moving really quickly with that. Thankfully FY '23 was all in one system, so it is a lot easier to pull the documents that they need. I was hoping to have a, a draft to kind of go over tonight, but it looks like that will have to wait until January. They are still hoping to have those two audits completed by January. I'm guessing that we will be able to actually approve the FY '22 audit in January and then the FY '23 audit in February. They might choose to, if they're going to come here and assist in that presentation, then they might choose to do both months at the same time, which that would be in February. The Department of Audit FY '20 full audit is also nearing an end. They are still pulling a few final payroll documents, but so far that's the only remaining items for that. Then I got notice, we have a nutrition audit for our CACFP, Child and Adult Food Care Program that is going to be starting in January. I have a feeling at that time that I will have to bring a couple of policies to be revised, just updating some meal numbers as far as prices and maybe a little bit of the process that goes about that.
Good comment. Could you share that information with us when they complete? That would be a wonderful Christmas surprise to hear that those audits are finally finished. That would be great.
Yes, I will let you know when we have that and share that with you.
Thank you.
As far as the cash reserve amount, last I looked was around 10 million.
Thank you. Any further questions? Trustee Kozar.
Chair Sorenson, thank you very much. Mrs. Green, could you tell me, I'm looking at through the bill list here and I saw that we had a bill payment to Lou Beecham. And I know she did some wonderful stuff for us, but how much longer do we have bills? How much longer are we going to be paying her, you know?
So we, Ms. Beecham's contract goes through June 30th of this year. We just kept her contract extended through this year, so that way as things popped up with audits or budgets that she had assisted with, that she could continue to help with that. She was also had a, a couple of outstanding items that she wanted to finish with regards to the budget and making and, and the payroll and ensuring that it was hitting the right accounts. She is on contract for $300 a day. She, I only expect her to work about one day a month at most for the remainder of the year if she's needed.
The remainder of the school year?
The remainder of the school year.
Any further questions or comments? Trustee Marshall?
Thank you. I do have one more question. You mentioned the nutrition audit. And when we voted in the consent agenda, I wasn't quick enough. But what is the Feed It Forward program?
So the Feed It Forward program is a program where donations are given. And then the nutrition liaison for the district looks at accounts and pays those students' accounts off.
Okay, any further comments or questions? We have a motion and a second to approve the monthly financial reports as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Federal and state grants financial report, Smoakley.
Chairman Sorenson, board. So if you look, the year '22 is out, so our, we've shrunk down our, our grid of the different grants. So those are all finished. Kristi Sprague will be wrapping up all that paperwork probably over winter break because everything's due December 30th and of that. But we're still on track with how we should be dispersing our grant funds. They don't like us, you know, waiting till the end or whatever. It should be a uniform process. At the last report, I had said, remember Title I, we, the allotment changed to about less $500 with the others went up. It came, Title II came a little bit late. And so we actually increased by $2,161.39, which every little bit, because the PD team salary and benefits come, the majority of that comes from that. So any increase that is helpful. On Monday, I submitted Whiting School Improvement Grant, 1,003A for the federal year '24. It hasn't been reviewed yet. So I checked when I got here. He hasn't opened it up yet, but that should go through. Dr. Canis and Melinda Garcia and Jody Shooter, we worked on that application. So that was submitted Monday. For your calendars ahead, the next Consolidated Grant Meeting will be held on Thursday, January 25th, 3:30 to 5:00 at Special Services. So you'll get my email eventually too, the winter one. And then tomorrow with Danielle Kunkel, I'm starting to work on the Perkins End of Year Report. And then every two years, we have to do a full needs assessment, which is a pretty, I want to say last year, two years ago, is a 58-page document. I mean, it's pretty thorough. So it needs to be part of the application that will be due in the middle of May. So we're starting on that. And that is all I have, in case you have questions.
We have a motion to adopt, or excuse me, a motion to approve the federal and state grants financial reports as presented?
No move.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions of Mrs. Smoakley? Trustee Marshall?
Thank you. What is the deadline for spending the ESER III funds?
So ESER III is, will all need to be obligated, which means it's accounted for by September 30th of 2024. However, depending on what the situation is, or not situation, but I guess, when you can actually spend it depends. So an example, anyone we pay salaries and benefits out of ESER III, the last month we can do that is September 30th, because employee obligation rules are different. Let's say we contract with Hagan to do some extra days. The obligation happens on the date of the contract, but we could not have the date scheduled for after December 30th. If someone we pay for a conference to go to, the travel has to happen before September 30th. So pretty much September 30th is when we want like everything done. Certain things, if we order supplies and materials, we'd have till December 30th to receive it. But pretty much next year, 2024. And again, if there are any salary and benefits, they cannot be paid after September 30th, 2024. And I have that, if anyone would like to see, it's a nice little handy chart, so I keep on my desktop as reference of all the different categories of when the obligation happens.
Pretty sure I know the answer to this question, but in relation to what you just said, we can't pull what's the remainder of the year salary from the ESER. It has to be obligated prior to.
Yeah. And then, and like I said, because that was something we, I had to correct with SRA. They thought they're, they're using some of their ESER III funds for their instructional facilitator. They thought that was till December 30th, but technically she falls under as our employee. So no, I had to correct that the last month. They could use those salaries was September 30th. So salaries, it's a different obligation thing. So yeah, so we could pay through the summer. And then the first month of how, I know it's not the fiscal year, but kind of like when our new contracts start and everything, we could pay the first month of September and nothing else.
So about three months of a new contract year?
One.
Just one?
Well, yeah, because the new, well, I guess it depends on the person. Yeah, July 1st, but yeah, usually I know teachers. I know I kept track of my salary. It was like September, it could go up or whatever. Insurance changes in July. If there's a raise or something, that changes in September and then always January, there's some rando tax insurance thing that happens. So, yeah, so just one month, we could pay.
Okay.
A buster.
If they were a teacher?
Or no, any employee, any employee is like, that's, that's the obligation rule. And that goes to all of them, I will say. So ESER is just sunsetting, but like any of our, so like year '23, all that needs to be obligated by September '24. So our regular grants have a 27-month timeframe.
Thank you. Trustee Marshall?
Thank you. Just a follow-up question. So am I reading this correctly? On the ESER III, there's a balance remaining of $5,257,826.20. Have you planned those expenditures or is that yet to be?
So a large majority of that is still, and I look to Mr. Wilson, if he wants to jump in, are the construction ongoing projects. And so that's a large majority of that. We have to have 20%. So in ESER III, it was written that 20% has to go to learning loss. And so one thing Kristi has been submitting is like, what were your activities for the 20% learning loss? How much of your percent has done? I'm making sure that we reach that 20% because to be very transparent, there's been some things the state has kind of slipped up on counting. And then like, I, I say July 1st to August 15th, that's when I expect the email to come to be like, did you spend your 20% on learning loss? So I, Kristi and I are tracking that. So once the construction part is, the projects, the HVAC projects are gone, it will be learning loss. So it will be summer school. There's a couple still other little projects. The Icare Garden is still being worked on. That's just $10,000. But we would do summer school. We would do tutoring all through that summer. That's where the majority will go. But we'll know that number and Mr. Strube is going to sit down with Kristi in January to get that exact number. But like Hagan, that would fit under the learning loss categories and things. So we'll know that then.
Any further questions or comments? Thank you. We have a motion to approve the federal and state grants financial reports as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's passed. Thank you. Give her that old business. I know I told a couple of you that we might take a break, but I've never had a group that large disappear so quickly and so quietly.
The wrestlers led the way.
Did they? Hey, old business. Adopt on third reading of policy 5040, the reduction in force. Dr. Goldheart, do we need to have anyone speak to this? It is third reading and hasn't changed since the second. Is that correct?
That is correct, and I have not had any comment come forward to me.
Do we have a motion to approve in third reading, policy 5040 reduction in force?
Mr. Chairman, move to adopt on third reading, policy 5040 reduction in force.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
I'm going to say Alex, trustee Christine. It's been moved and seconded. Are there any discussions, questions, comments, cares, concerns? Give a motion to approve or adopt on third reading, policy 5040. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's passed. New business. Approve on first reading, policy 2035, capitalization policy and inventory policy. I won't even tell you on first reading what I thought this was. I couldn't figure it out until I, until I read the thing. This is a federal requirement. Is that correct, Dr. Goldheart?
That is correct. All of the changes are required based upon feedback from auditing that we need to have.
Mrs. Green, did you want to add anything?
I'll just add that the capitalization threshold in this policy were based off GASB guidance as well as examples listed in the Wyoming School District Accounting Manual.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve on first reading, policy 2035, capitalization policy and inventory policy.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Martin.
Has this policy been vetted by the Policy and Governance Committee?
It has not. Is, this would be a great time to discuss that. I, I was unaware that they needed to do, to do each one. Is that one that we want? Let's discuss that. Because that's why it didn't go there. We, we, we weren't aware that it needed to go there until we understood if there were questions. This is one, too. Correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Goldheart, is the wording in this pretty much boilerplate? Is it directed to us or, or did we write this?
No, we didn't write this. This is based upon direction we've received.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, just a follow-up. I wasn't trying to imply that it should go to.
No, no, no. I, I understand. It's just, this would be a good time. Did that answer your question that this basically is come, has a need to come down or up?
My question was just as if, if everyone to the policy committees, I'm still trying to get an idea of exactly what the protocol is.
Trustee Bear?
I guess I'll just add, we discussed this when it came on the agenda and we didn't. Typically for governance, we've looked at things that required a lot of discussion and when this is sort of required of us, we haven't discussed those policies.
Any other questions or concerns, comments? We have a motion and a second down the floor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is passed. Approve the annual agenda. I know where this comes from. We go back and look at agendas from years previous and find out all the things that were done previously and had to be done and look forward to this year to see if in fact they were on our agendas for this year. And so Dr. Goldheart, or. If in fact, they were on our agendas for this year. And so Dr. Goldheart, um or Casey Baldwin, do you have anything you guys want to add to that?
I do not. Mrs. Baldwin puts this together every year. It's a requirement. That we set that agenda. However. Uh, if you do make changes, you have to do so, which. You were doing tonight as well for this this year.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, or the only change that I made was I heard mentioned in a previous meeting. About having a um S R O update annually. And I did add that to the annual agenda and it's highlighted. That's the only thing to my knowledge that has changed.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve the annual agenda.
Don't move.
It's been moved. Thank you. Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? Trustee Marshall?
Thank you. I do have a question. Mrs. Green, one of the things I heard in that Department of Audit um course. Was that boards have to have an annual approval of depository? Does that apply to the school board as well?
Yes, trustee, that does.
So we need to add that somewhere. What month would be the appropriate place to add that?
Chairman, trustee, I think that with um your audit approval. You could possibly do it then. You can also do it um at the end of the year. With your June financials. We could present. The amounts outstanding or left in the bank at that time.
Would we need to to do a an amendment to this motion then, or would we would just be reminded to do that at that time?
Chairman, I believe you would just be reminded to do that at that time. I would make it part of the audit presentation or part of the budget presentation, whichever timeframe you wanted.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Trustee Murthy?
Thank you. I guess I'm struggling a little bit with like the level of detail or how much needs to go into this because I know another thing that's important and should be on our radar is like when we approve the insurance premiums. And things like that. Do we need to add those types of things?
I will ask Dr. Goldheart or Mrs. Green if they could answer that.
The insurance premiums, I know right now there the process has already started. Of getting bids from various organizations for insurance. Uh, if we want to put that on there. You generally would have it by March or April. Would be a a good time for that because everything would be in place so that employees would know what. System we would be going with.
I thought there was a specific time we have to do it by. And that's that's what was triggering my question because if so, it's a good reminder to have it on the calendar maybe. Um, and I know the process has started, which is wonderful that we're that we're looking at this thoroughly and early uh this year. Um, so I really do appreciate that. Um, and I still am just, I don't remember or know when we have to. Vote on it by.
You wept generally required a May vote. Of approval, which is kind of late. However. I would. Tentatively put March or April because I think it should be done earlier than later.
Is it possible to to accept this list? And as we add those things, because we've actually asked that as a requirement. For the future and then document that for the next time we had we adopted this agenda? Or should it be on this agenda now? I guess I'm asking for a recommendation.
Uh, if you know what it is now, I think it's better to have that in there upfront. However, you also need the flexibility if there are. Uh, time changes with different topics that you're able to do that. Uh, with the insurance, I would shoot for April at the latest.
Reason I'm asking is because it has never been on the agenda, the board agenda in the past. So to put it on now and go through the process of amending this. Which I have no problem with, but I'm just wondering if that's what we want to do. Trustee Stanton?
I I guess I'm confused about the intention of this document. If the intention of this document is just to give the board. An annual overview so that things don't sneak up on us and catch us by surprise. I'm not sure if it's. A terrible idea that to have that on here. It just gives us a sense of the rhythms of the year. So if Dr. Goldheart is suggesting April and then I looked at some of our representatives in the back nodding. Um, I I would be in favor of including it on here.
I went back and looked at our next agenda item, which is the budget calendar, and it's not on that either. So since not everything is listed. From the budget calendar to this, I would agree that. That we probably need to add the web. Vote on our annual agenda since it's not listed in the budget calendar. I'm not seeing it as I look through it quickly in March or April. Trustee Marshall?
Thank you. Mr. Chair, just a suggestion um that there is a motion and a second to approve this. And that as needed, items may be added to this agenda. As things come up that, you know, we've neglected to put on over the years um. That it may have to be a a living document that we amend as things come to our attention.
I I would agree totally with that because if it's not listed in the budget agenda. Then it should be listed here. It seems like it would be better served listed in the budget calendar. But it's so important for everyone to see when our. When it is due so that it starts early enough. Um, we have a motion and a second to pass. The. Agenda. The annual board agenda. All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion is passed. Approve the F Y twenty five budget calendar. Mrs. Green, are there or Mrs. Baldwin? I I have Mrs. Green down here as my source. Um. What changes? I see February and March are highlighted. Are there changes there?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chair. The February highlighted used to say January thirty first. And then March used to say February and March. When Mrs. Baldwin asked me if I had any suggested changes. Um, I suggested that the budgets be du- delivered to the principals the end of February. And then um they can start their process in March. This was to give the board a little bit of time to hear the um. Things that we are discussing in the finance committee and kind of to give me a feel of um. What's going to happen in the future years and help guide principals in that budget process.
Thank you. As I look at this as a comment, well, no, let me. Is there a motion first?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve fiscal year twenty twenty five budget calendar.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, comments. It seems like this would be the ideal place to put the where we vote on the web or when it's due, when that study is. Trustee Murthy?
I wondered the same thing, but I don't know that it is. I mean, the. The budget calendar doesn't really. Incorporate the work of the finance committee and the board. Down and until we get to April. And I don't have a problem with that necessarily. We kind of have our own process where we're exploring all of these different things. Um, but yeah, so I don't know whether this is the appropriate place or not.
We have also discussed just having the previous um document that we approved as a living document. And 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 documenting as we add those things to make sure that they're added in the future. And if we can live with that, which we clearly must be able to, we approve that. We have a motion second. Any further discussion on the budget calendar for the school year? Twenty five. For the fiscal year twenty five.
Mr. Chairman, just really quick, I just want to remind the board. Uh, when we're we're saying the word wept, that is our current carrier. There's no guarantee. That they will be the carrier for the next fiscal year, just as a reminder. It's the insurance carrier we we that is decided on.
Thank you. Any further discussions, comments, questions, concerns? If we have a motion to approve the fiscal year. Uh, twenty twenty five budget calendar. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's passed. Okay, approve the changing meeting dates in January, March and July. We have um the holiday breaks, the Christmas breaks, we have spring break, we have several things. That are interfering fourth of July uh that are interfering with either a work session or the regular meetings. So. Um, I'll read this through so that everybody's clear on the motion. The motion would be to approve the following meeting day changes. The January work session, which was scheduled for January third. Um, would be moved to January tenth. That would move the regular meeting scheduled for January tenth to January seventeenth. Then we would take the March meeting that was scheduled for March thirteenth and move it to March twentieth. We would then take the July work session scheduled for July third and move that to July tenth. Moving the previously scheduled regular meeting on July tenth to July seventeenth. Do I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Do we have a second? Thank you.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's passed. Chairs report. Getting kind of giddy here. I I I set a record at my first meeting as the chair and we we're so close. We could set a record. Uh, the other way. Delegate Assembly, uh trustee Martin, could you enlighten us on what you saw or heard at Delegate Assembly this year?
Be be happy to. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Um, you all were presented with a list of voting items or items that would be voted upon. At the delegate assembly a few months ago, uh, nothing super groundbreaking or controversial, but. Um, going through them just really quickly to remind everyone it was. And these are resolutions that, you know, as you're saying, that the the school boards of Wyoming want this. It doesn't necessarily create any kind of new laws or anything, but. Um, the ability to increase or decrease the board size depending on a school district's. You know, whims or population, um allowing direct payments to B O C's as a um. Recipient recipient of a state and federal, I think it's state and federal funding. Um, increasing the threshold for safety and security expenditures in the budget model. Moving obstacles to rehiring retired teachers to fill vacancies, bringing them on back into the fold. And then an advocacy agenda, which um if you're interested, I can. Reset it, but this is stuff you all went over. Um, long story short, is everything passed without much controversy except for the B O C's. Um, because of things that I don't really understand because I've never really engaged in that realm because we don't have a B O C's. We're the one um. District in the state that doesn't, so it doesn't affect us. Um, but it was uh everyone was surprised by the agreement. The and the consensus in the room of 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 all of these things. They're pretty well trod and common sense for for the most part. So. Um, the delegate assembly wrapped actually early. And everybody was sent off to look at the concessionaires because the next portion of the. Program wasn't ready yet.
Thank you so much. Any questions of trustee Marshall or trustee Martin? Thank you so much. The next two things, um, I had an interesting take on these because they're. We we didn't put recommendations for actions for motions for these because for several reasons. But the most important are that the standing committees and the. And the district committees, basically the assignments there are at the prerogative of the appointment from the chair. We are about to appoint a new chair tonight. So if it is, if it is the desire of this board to bring this. To the attention of the board for passing, we can do that in the January meeting. Fair enough. The same thing is true for the board goals. I went through and it's on there and I have a hard copy if you prefer. And it came down to seven. I know what I handed out to you was six. I don't know that anyone is interested in in being responsible for six or seven goals. I get that. If we were to do a motion and a second, then perhaps we would need to probably start thinking about building in checks and balances. To measure our progress and to what degree we achieved um. Our goals. If not. What we're doing tonight. In the discussion that may happen afterwards or by your action next week or next month. I'm just saying, these are in the minutes now. They're part of the public information. They're there. Um, I I put them in the chairs report for that specific reason, just to enter them into the public record. So they're there. You can look at them, change them, bring it up to the next chair, get it on the floor if you wish. But I know how you loathe and I get it completely to get something. And then have to vote on it that night. And this is a daunting task. I think I. I put in all of these suggestions that I received in email or text comments. I also included the comments. I took out all the salutations and all that, but I didn't change anything else. So the proposed goals reflect the changes from the comments and I included the comments. Now you can leave it at that and it just enters the public record because we um we talked about it here. Or bring it up to the next chair and and go through a process of motion second and voting for them. Now I'll leave that up to you. Are there any questions on that? There really. Trustee Bear?
I guess I'm just curious. I'm, I think it's good to track these and and to be mindful of them, especially the goals. Um. My concern with voting is I I just think we need to be flexible and I don't know if that limits us, especially with committees. I think oftentimes we are assigned to a committee or we volunteer for one and then schedules don't align and. I just think we need to be fluid, especially with committees um. As things change for the board. And so. I I'm not sure I think it's necessary to vote on them and I don't. Not in favor of voting on something we don't really need to, just to allow us some time to change. I do think it's important that we capture especially the goals and we find some way to sort of revisit them before I retreat when we do them.
Trustee Marshall?
Thank you. Um, I'm not even sure where these goals came from. I mean, it's not something that we've had any group discussion about. I what I think is that you captured some of our conversations at the retreat. But I don't think we're anywhere near ready to adopt these until we have a chance to. Have some discussion and I don't know when that would be because it sounds like. We've got some full work sessions coming up, but yeah, thank you for your work on this, but I. I think we need to have some discussion. Before we finalize any goals and I agree, seven is way too many.
Trustee Marshall, you hit the nail right on the head. These are exactly. You're exactly right. They came from my notes from our retreat meetings and they came from my notes. Several weeks later, to be quite honest with you. And so when I sent these out about a month ago so ago, I was so appreciative of the responses because. They spurred yet additional memories or clarified some things and I tried to add that to it. These are not perfect and that is would be another rationale for being careful about. Going through a formal process of adoption and and because I think it locks you in and and without an opportunity, we're in that perfect storm year. Of of it seems like every free minute that we have. Another entity wants it and justifiably so, we give it to them. So I'm throwing these out for you to look at. And I think if they're fluid, please make the suggestions for changes because. These are on paper. I used to do this all the time. This is not stone or wood or something art. It's meant to be temporary. Trustee Bear?
I guess I would suggest that this is probably a good role for governance and I don't know that we have anything. And so I wondered if we could maybe just. And so I wondered if we could maybe just over the next month, if board members could look at the goals and send suggestions to governance. And then in January, maybe we could try to make some consolidated list of four or whatever to discuss.
I certainly have them. If somebody requests them and you also have them, they should be under the Chair's Report on, on Board Docs now. So, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Martin.
I have a question. Under the comments, are these just things that are copied and pasted from emails?
Yes.
So I'm just, you know.
Yes.
Typically, when I send an email, I understand that it's part of the public record per like a FOIA request, but I don't necessarily expect things to be like entered into the agenda. Um, and I just, just throwing that out there as, as an observation.
That's such a good point, and, and it's partially the reason why I took out all the salutations or names or anything like that. Um, there wasn't anything that provoked that, other than I really didn't have permission to post the names and the, and I wanted you to see that, that we had had some comments and that they were implemented into the proposed goals, had no other way to do that, so, um, but to list them both. Probably need to look at the way we do this, because to be honest with you, it actually caught me off guard a little bit, knowing that suddenly, and this discussion was to lead to goals, even though that was an agenda item at the retreat, those goals, it was hard to retract that from all the discussion, so. And, and probably a new, uh, Chair's mistake there, but, um, I think there needs to be a more formal process and somebody needs to be there just specifically to write those down as they're happening. They certainly would be more clear. Thank you. Okay, I will move on in the Chair's Report. Um, I just wanted to do a couple of quick reminders that in February, we have Slade School, um, March, Indian Paintbrush. In April, uh, Leadership and Performance, and that would be Mr. Hardesty. And in May, Centennial and Harmony. So those are school reports coming up down the road. And those are just reminders, uh, from me, um, to you. Also, if anyone is interested in attending the Christmas program at Rock River tomorrow, I will be attending. Give me a call, drop me a line, um, we can ride together or whatever. It's, it's at a different time. It's, it's at four thirty, um, so just be aware of that. Um, that's all I had. So let's get to the, let's get to the good stuff. All right, we're, we're at Officer Elections, number twelve. I'm gonna start with Chairman, and I would need a motion from the floor, uh, for somebody, um, to move for the position of Chairman. Trustee Marshall.
Mr. Chair, I nominate Beth Bear as our next chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any other nominations for the position of Chair? Beth Bear, are there any other nominations? Any more nominations? How do people do this and ask like three or four times? I don't know how they do it. I'll ask three times. Are there any more nominations for the position of Chair? Hey, all those in favor of Beth Bear as the Chairman of the Albany County School District Board of Trustees, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's passed. Congratulations. The position of Vice Chair, I would take a motion to nominate somebody for the Vice Chair. Trustee Bear.
Mr. Chair, I nominate Carrie Murthy as Vice Chair.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to nominate Carrie Murthy for the position of Vice Chair. Are there any other nominations?
Mr. Chairman, who made that second?
Sorry.
Thank you.
One more time. Are there any more nominations for the, for the position of Vice Chair? We have a motion in a second to nominate Carrie Murthy for Vice Chairman of the Albany County School Board. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's passed. Congratulations. Clerk. Do we have a motion to nominate for the position of Clerk? Trustee Gosar.
Here, Sorenson, I nominate Trustee Marshall for the quick position.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Did you get that? Thank you. I finally get one and you're, you, you beat me to it. All right, is there another, are there any other nominations for the position of Clerk? We have Trustee Marshall. Any other nominations? Okay, we have a motion in a second for Janice Marshall as Clerk of the Albany County School Board. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's passed. Congratulations. Treasurer. Are there, I would, are there any nominations for the position of Treasurer? Trustee Stan? No, Trustee Murthy.
Mr. Chair, I nominate Nate Martin as Treasurer.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any other nominations for the position of Treasurer? Any other nominations for the position of Treasurer? Okay, it's been moved and seconded, the Trustee Martin, Nate Martin, for the position of Treasurer of the Albany County School Board. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations. Okay, we have an executive session, uh. We also, after the executive session for audience information, we will, um, there is a chance that we will be making one, perhaps two, motions when we return from executive session. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adjourn to executive session for the purpose of personnel and potential litigation pursuant to Wyoming Statute sixteen dash four dash four oh five, a Romanate two, Romanate three, Romanate nine.
Wow.
Is there a second?
I've been practicing all afternoon.
It's been moved in second. And any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. I was, I was all set to say.
Well, I assume they go.
Oh, yeah, you know.
That will be the first one. Then Nate's gonna make an amendment. We are reconvened from our executive session. Do we have a motion on the personnel recommendations?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the personnel recommendations as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, thank you. Are there any concerns or questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to make an amendment to the personnel recommendation under the Communication Coordinator positions listed as the funding sources, S R three, when I believe it's actually a general fund, so I would move to amend that line to replace S R three with general.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Are there any comments on the amendment to the original motion? Which is to move the payment for the position of the communication director from S R three funds to the general fund?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, it's not moving it, it's just, I think this is a typo.
Changing it? Okay. Any comments? It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're back to the original motion as amended. Are there any comments? Trustee Marshall?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I appreciate the efforts that have been made and the need for a communications coordinator. As I look at our certified salary schedule and see that a teacher with a bachelor's has to work for 23 years to earn $65,000, which is the salary for our communications coordinator. A teacher with a master's degree has to work for 18 years to earn $65,000. A teacher with a doctorate has to work for 14 years to earn $65,000. I simply cannot support that. And this week in a conversation with a teacher, it was relayed to me that they felt like that was a slap in the face to teachers. And I just simply will not be able to support that. So I will be voting no on that item and aye on all others in the personnel recommendations.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Martin?
Just to kind of respond to what Trustee Marshall is saying. I mean, the district for the past decade or two has been laboring under the illusion that you can pay people sub-market rates and get away with it. And that chicken is coming home to roost right now. And we can't continue to do that either for teachers or for other professionals that we intend to hire and retain. We've discussed the need for a communications coordinator because lots of people are core stakeholders, whether it's families, whether it's employees, whether it's the community at large, don't know what's happening in the district because we do a bad job of communicating. There's a clear need for this position. And if teachers are upset at the pay scale, that's rightly so. But again, it's the result of Albany County School District for a decade not paying teachers enough and watching other districts pay their teachers more and more. And we failed to act. So I'll be supporting the motion.
Any other comment? Trustee Gosar?
Chair Swanson, I completely agree that this is a position that is needed in this district. I am concerned about the timing. We've asked, you know, across, you know, multiple departments in this district for places where we could save money to make this budget work. And I really just think that this is not the time to do this. I will be voting no on this one, but yes on all the other items in the agenda.
Thank you. Any other comments? Trustee Stan?
Thank you, Trustee Gosar, Trustee Marshall. I hear your concerns and they're very valid. I think our district is in a position right now where we've gotten ourselves stuck in a couple corners. And we've seen the boardroom fill up with distressed community in our district. Because as we try to figure things out and as we try to figure them out publicly, word gets out into the community that we're thinking about something and it's causing a ton of distress for people. And I think, you know, I use the phrase in here, it's one of my favorites. I don't have time to build a fence, I'm too busy chasing the cows. We've gotten ourselves in a terrible position around teacher pay. We're also in a terrible position around community relations. And I feel like not taking care of our infrastructure and our communication is not the way out of this corner that we're in here. So with recognition of how it will impact our other personnel to see this salary scale voted on, looking at the big picture and how we move forward in communication with our community, I do support this position with like hurt in my heart, knowing of the people who have worked in this district a long time and are nowhere near this pay scale.
Is there any further discussion? Just a reminder, we have a motion on, an amended motion on the floor to approve personnel recommendations as presented and moving or replacing S R three funds with general. That is our motion that's on the floor. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay, Mr. Chair, on the communications coordinator, aye, as to all other personnel matters.
Same.
Thank you. Motion's passed. We have one other item of business from our executive session as well. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the recommendation for dismissal of a classified employee.
Sir, a second? Thank you. Any discussion? And I would caution us to be very careful about the discussion. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's passed. We are adjourned. Thank you. Do you remember who seconded your motion? Nate, do you remember who seconded your motion? Did you get it? Great, thank you.
So we'll, we'll have, we're all settled.
...